Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of December 16th, 2020. This meeting is being held full remotely in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law general GL, small c, 30a, section 20. This meeting will be broadcast live on WHCA TV and online, and it's being recorded for use at a later date. I would like to remind everyone of that. Also, in accordance with all of the governor's specifications, we have a few members that are quarantining tonight. I believe that Mr. Scriven was not feeling well. Mr. Forth contacted me just shortly at 5:15 and said he's been in contact of possible coronavirus, so he will not be here this evening. He is also quarantining. I don't know if Chris is just sick or he's quarantining, but there seems to be a tremendous amount of that going around.
Is that Chris who just called in? Is Chris on the phone?
Mr. Scriven, you there?
I am.
Oh, okay. And Mr. Small, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All votes this evening will be roll call votes because we have two participating members remote. If no one has any questions, again, it's being recorded and broadcast live for use at another time if needed. I would ask you to join me in a moment of silence, but please keep Teacher Kristen Finn in your thoughts. She was a teacher here at the high school. She was loved by her students and her peers. She worked here for several years and is a wonderful person, so I would ask you to please keep her in your thoughts this evening, and also keep everyone in your thoughts that has this terrible touches of the coronavirus. So, please, uh, thank you. Thank you. Would you please join me in the pledge allegiance? The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and Just for the record, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Howard?
Here.
Mr. Boyce?
Here.
Mr. Colletti?
Here.
Ms. Snifflin?
Here.
Ms. Fires?
Here.
Mr. Hayes?
Here.
Mr. Scriven?
Here.
Thank you. I have nine members too remote. So, the meeting has been called to order. Is anyone in line for public comment?
I have no one, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll give that a few minutes. I'd just like to tell the committee that the superintendent and myself are gonna start a show on WHCA to highlight what goes on in Whitman Hansen in the district for part of the community engagement piece that we have talked about. We are looking for anyone that may want to volunteer to be a guest on the show. We are also looking for anyone that has any ideas of, that they might want to come forward with that we could highlight or showcase, or anyone that's watching such as students, as Dawn has mentioned, with clubs. We're going to be trying to get some students on, some teachers on, some faculty on. Mr. Rogers is already scheduled to come on and talk about athletics. He just doesn't know it yet. I volunteered him.
You found out that Mr. Roger Dable is...
So, if anyone has any ideas, we were thinking of, we're gonna pilot it Monday at 1 o'clock. We're gonna do our first show, and how we're gonna do it is we're gonna lay it out to the public on what we're looking for, what we're hoping to accomplish, and what we want public participation. We want everyone to know what's going on in the district, and it might be something as very little that you think I should just mention, or Jeff should mention, or it could be a whole show, or it could even be a series. We're looking for a name. We first thought of Whitman Hansen Live, but we want everybody to understand that it's a broadcast for the Whitman Hansen Regional School District. So, if somebody can come up with a good catchy name before Monday at noon time, you can certainly call me on my cellphone at 617-538-0189, or you can email me at bobhays4433@gmail.com, or you can most certainly call the superintendent's office and speak with Michelle Lindberg, or get ahold of the superintendent. But, uh, that's, that's one of our plans. Dawn, you had your hand up.
Yeah, not to volunteer, but to check on WHCA on the live feed right now. I just got a message. It was scrambled, so I don't know if...
Ryan?
I'm watching it fine, with a little bit of a lag.
Is it online, Fred, or is it on TV?
I'm watching it online.
Okay.
I had somebody just say the same. It was a little weird.
So, Ryan, if you're there, we're on.
I know we have guests, so I just wanted to make sure.
If you have any issues, you can call me and text me on my cell.
Absolutely.
617-538-0189, and my phone's in front of me. So, again, any other community engagement ideas? We are most certainly searching and looking and hoping that people will come up with some stuff that we can use and pilot the show and see if we can showcase all the great things with what's going on today with viruses and sickness, and we're looking to show the good things that are done at Whitman Hansen, and God knows, there's tons of wonderful things done here in this region. Questions, anyone? Comments?
I think, it's a great idea. Thank you for offering to do that on TV, because I know we have a lot of viewers at home that probably watch Community Access. I did ask Chair Hayes and superintendent if we could put some information in the Weekly Express newspaper about the high school, more so the extracurricular clubs and activities. I know there are some students who are athletic minded and some who are into activities, so maybe if we can start to show a spotlight or a showcase on what some students are doing after school and to improve culture at the high school and get together. So, that's something that we'll see if we can pull together in the newspaper.
Great idea. If anyone has any ideas, do not be bashful. Please come forward, and that is for all viewers. Mr. Simonak?
And we also have a spot, a leadership column. If any school committee member wants to volunteer and write an article, I'm sure one of my principals would like, will be happy to give up a week. So, if anybody wants to do an article, if they have something pertinent that they, or they've seen, or they want to send it to me, and we'll get it in, just let me know ahead of time. So, it's open to this committee as well.
Superintendent Simonak, I'm volunteering Mr. Boyce. Being the curator at JFK and having a long history there, you know, I'm sure that he would have something to add, maybe some, oh, you're not open to the public yet, right?
No, no, it's gonna be a while, folks. Hang in there.
Are there any more public comments? Do you have anything?
We have nothing.
Because I'm gonna move on.
We can move on.
Okay. Student advisor. Our student advisor that we had is taking a job and doesn't have time to do the student advisor. So, Mr. Moriarty, as I understand, has spoken to Anna...
Flynn.
And she has volunteered to become our new student advisor. She just was unavailable at a loss. This just happened, I believe, today. So, unfortunately, we don't have a student advisory report this evening, but we do have a new student advisor, and it's wonderful that we have someone volunteering. I'd entertain a motion to improve the minutes of November 18th, 2020.
So moved by Dan.
So moved.
I have, I think Dan was first and Fred seconded.
That's fine.
Discussion. It's a roll call vote. Hillary?
Yes.
Bob Hayes, yes. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Colletti?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Nine zero, thank you. Superintendent's report, please.
So, we have the fun part of the year where we get to recognize two of our most highest achieving students. The Mass Association of School Superintendents recognizes two of our best academic performers, and those students are here tonight. So, I will read their certificate and then announce the names. Certificate of Academic Excellence, having duly qualified under the standards prescribed by the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, is hereby awarded this certificate of Academic Excellence. It witnessed thereof, the seal of the association, and the signature of the superintendent of school, and hereon through affixed, and it's signed by myself, and I'd like to call up Paten Bouzela and Abigail Delory. So, we're gonna do this COVID style. So, Paten, here's your certificate. We'll give you a little fist bump on this side. We'll get one. Abby, wait right there. We're gonna get one. Abby, come on over to the side. And get yours here. So, we can get a little closer. We're not gonna be very...
All right, great.
And Abigail?
Thank you, young lady. Come on, we're... Perfect. Congratulations.
Jeff, I'll ask Chair, would it be all right to hear from the students?
What's that?
Can we ask the students? Are they prepared to like?
Probably not, but...
Like, share anything, or? I don't know.
Paten and Abby, I don't know if you want to take a podium and see for a few. I'm scared 15 minutes of... You got it. Congratulations.
And you guys don't have to stay for the meeting if you don't want to. That's, that's good. Watch it online.
Extra credit.
Hey, we do need somebody to wipe the...
Right, right.
Excuse me. Good night, folks.
Bye, guys. Congratulations.
Bye-bye.
Stay safe tonight. Stay warm.
Congratulations.
I'd like to call up Dr. Jones. He's got a Miles for Meals fundraiser and donation for our food pantry update.
Excuse me.
Good evening. Um, this year, the National Honor Society held its 11th Annual Miles for Meals 5K and One Mile Walk on Halloween virtually due to obvious social distancing reasons. Community members were encouraged to get out and walk in their neighborhoods, dress up and share pictures of their activities on social media. The NHS received many generous donations through GoFundMe this year. They tried that as a different way to donate to help support this great cause. In the end, a total of $2,190 was raised this year. The Whitman and Hansen food pantries will each be receiving a check in the amount of $1,095 as a result of this effort. The National Honor Society would also like to thank the community for its support and generosity, as well as both food pantries for all the hard work they do, especially during this trying time.
Congratulations to all the students and all the volunteers. Again, this is another wonderful thing that happens here at Whitman Hansen, and this could be one of the things when, before they're doing these things, if we could showcase them, and they may even help them receive more donations if we can get it out there. So, that's one of the things, Dr. Jones, that we're hoping to come up with a list of things so we can say, at this show, we should be contacting, you know, this time of the year.
Yep.
So, we're hoping for a lot of support with that, and that's where we're headed with this, not to jump into...
No, that'd, that'd be great. Any, any publicity like that would help a ton, and it helps the kids out, too, because they get to see, you know, the actual impact or a larger vision of the impact that they're having in the clubs that they have.
Thank you.
Just to elaborate on, on Chris and what that piece is, that's, that's a teacher and a group coming together in COVID and thinking outside the box to make sure that we're still taking care of our community. You're seeing that in every school. They're doing things differently. It, it's been a really rough couple months, teacher, student alike, but I think the creativity, the bonus of this, of this whole virus, is people have been thinking very creatively, and, and, and nothing's getting them down. They're still progressing to do the things that are important, to do things that they believe in, and to make sure members of our community are taken care of. You've seen this for Miles for Meals. We've had food drives. We've had donations. And Chris, I don't know if you, you're on the spot right now. The door was slamming under my office today, and I saw all these elves delivering gifts outside. I don't know what was going on, but can you tell the committee what happened today?
Sure. Key Club had their giving drive, their Giving Tree Drive. So, they had, I actually came back to my office today and found that it had been transformed into a storage room. So, we had all kinds of toys to give away and to donate that the Key Club just finished their drive. And the amazing thing about that is, as you heard the door slamming, they all emptied it, probably five minutes after they left, people showed up with more donations. So, they've gotta make another trip because people just keep bringing in the donations for individuals. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of giving going on. There's a lot of charity, and like you said, Mr. Simonak, the creativity that's going on for people to get around the traditional face-to-face type of things is fantastic to see, and shows that really the spirit of giving that these kids have and the spirit of community service that they're displaying isn't just something for show. They're actually coming up with creative ways to, to make it happen.
Thanks, Chris.
Actually, I have one more comment.
Go ahead, Dawn.
I'll just give a plug to the Panthers Den also, because they've created the website with online shopping, where they used to have in-person shopping, right? So, the visual merchandising class is selling Panther gear.
I was gonna say, that, that speaks to instruction that's going on in the classroom as well, because the, the class set that up and set up a website to do visual merchandising through the website instead of out of the store, and now they have curbside pickup. So, don't forget to order your Panther gear online.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, in the spirit of giving, North River Collaborative, it's not really giving, but they had to readjust their books a little bit, and they were overcharging us for transportation during COVID. So, we are gonna get back $9,700, $9,735 in over, over charges. So, that's a nice gift. That was a, a, a little bit of a surprise. I spoke to the director, and he had a, he hired a new transportation person for the collaborative in the phase of COVID, trying to schedule buses and vans, or excuse me, vans, when you can only put one or two children on a van, when they used to put four, kind of messed up their books. He was apologetic. He fixed the situation. People were held accountable in his, at the collaborative to make sure that this didn't happen again. But I just wanted to announce to the committee, we overpaid by about $9,735, which will come back to the district in the form of transportation from North River Collaborative. I'm gonna move right onto COVID. As far as an update, honest and truly, we're hanging on by our fingertips and toes right now to try to stay in school. The surrounding towns around us have gone remote. Abington, Rockland, and Bridgewater, Rainham today have gone remote. Our numbers have, last week, were, were, were pretty high. We've leveled off a little bit, and I'll, I'll give you where we're at in a minute. But we are really trying to make, Friday now, we are out tomorrow. The goal is really to come back on Friday to make sure our Cohort B kids get to see their teachers and potentially bring back any type of materials they might need if something happens over break where we have a spike and we have to go remote. Cohort A kids met Tuesday, and parents might have seen some reading material or some things in preparation of the virtual day on the 21st, or the remote day on the 21st and 22nd for their cohort. I really wanna try to get kids in on Friday, depending, weather permitting, obviously. We have shut the district down tomorrow to give Ernie and his crew every building, every, there should be nobody on campus tomorrow except for facilities, folks, so he can clean the parking lots and prepare the sidewalks for kids on, on Friday, if that, if, if we were to, if the weather doesn't dump 24 inches of snow on us. That being said, I asked Lisa to give me, Lisa Tobin, to give me an update on where we're at. Positive students, December 1st to December 16th, we had 29 positive students. Of the 29 students that tested positive, 20 became positive while in quarantine due to being a close contact. Many of these positives are siblings. Positive staff in that timeframe, we had seven positive staff. Five of the staff were already in quarantine as close contacts when they became positive. Total students in various stages of quarantine, December 1st to December 16th, was 142, but as of today, many have now tested out and completed quarantine. Total staff in various stages of quarantine, we had 21 staff members. Many of these quarantines are being, being close contacts are positive. Many students and staff have stayed home on various days, pending test results due to COVID-like symptoms, and I think we have a couple of school community members that are in that, that boat right now. So, again, we are hanging on. One of the things that I think, folks, and I asked Lisa to clarify this for me, DESI puts out those student positives for, for towns, and your town comes up or your school comes up, and it says Whitman Hansen has one positive student, but as everyone in this room knows, I send out something and say, we had a positive case at Whitman Hansen. We had a positive case at Indian Head, whatever, school. Lisa's understanding, and this is from DESI, they only report the numbers that have been in the building in the last seven days, all right? When asked to report, they ask if the student has been in the building. So, if the student who's already been in quarantine because of a close contact, that is not reported by us to the state. So, I'm not gonna say fuzzy math, but statistically, may not be as accurate as what we are experiencing in the district. So, when parents see that on the screen from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it's important for them to know and for teachers to know, DESI only reports if a student has been in the building within that seven-day cycle of becoming positive. And some of our students, as I just listed, have already been in quarantine, so they were not in school. And if they were in the hybrid model in quarantine, they might not have been in school to be reported as positive. So, I just wanted to clarify that with the committee, and it's, again, statistics from the department, and I don't want people to come at you and say, wow, you know, I looked on Channel 25, they showed that Whitman Hansen had four positives in the past two weeks, or two positives, and Jeff sent something out, and he had 12. So, that, that's the explanation for that. I don't know why they did that. That's how it's been since, since September, since they started reporting. But now with the cases escalating, I think it's important for people to know how it's reported from us. Lisa does a heck of a job doing this. She is, she's a hero for us right now. Between contacting families, between doing the contact tracing, she's been invaluable for us as a district and for us as a central office. She works on weekends. She works at night. The past two months have been very, very busy for her, and I think she even got a shout-out from one of the, from the vice president of the union back there today, because she answered some tough questions. So, our, our data is accurate. Our data is transparent for us. So, when you see things that don't necessarily look right, trust the fact that when we send things out, it's, it's what it is. The other piece that we've been lucky enough so far is that we haven't had really a transmittal between faculty and student or student and faculty. We've had close contacts, absolutely, but we haven't had a case where I'm sitting here and Dawn's sitting there, I become positive, and then Dawn becomes positive. That just hasn't happened, and I equate that to the fact that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing as far as six feet, as far as masks, as far as hand washing, everything we put into place. And I also think we've been pretty lucky, because kids have been on, off cohort when they have tested positive. We spoke about this before. Coming in two days, having a day, and then being out for two at home has, I think, been beneficial to us, and I really feel that that six-foot distance, at least at this point, has really helped us to keep kids safe and not test positive. It's the outside of school. It's the interaction between sports. I'm still hearing of sleepovers. I'm still hearing of things in the towns, and I would just caution parents over the next break between the 23rd and January 4th, to try to keep your kids as, as safe as possible, and, and I know it's tough, but decline those sleepovers where you don't know where people have been, so we can all come back to school January 4th, because that will be the goal. I did have a conversation with both boards of health last Wednesday. They are very concerned about the holiday break, especially at the secondary level for New Year's Eve. So, we are watching that. Does that mean that we might, if things spike at just the high school, that the high school goes remote for a couple weeks or something? There's a strong possibility. I am gonna meet with the, the Department of Health next week by Zoom and the week after, just to see where they are. But they are, and I wanna shout out to both towns, both boards of health, Department of Health, the people working there have been outstanding to work with, and I truly feel it's a great partnership between our district and the two towns. Chief Grenow, Chief Thompson, we've talked about the distribution and the inoculations, and we've talked about the COVID testing. So, everybody's working together to make sure our kids, our teachers, and our families are safe in the community. So, that's where we are with that piece of COVID. DESI also came out, if you watched any news yesterday, the Board of Education talked about time on learning, and George is gonna talk about our time on learning, our, our time on learning report, and I will just tip you that we are not on the naughty list. We passed. I was very happy to get that last week, and George can tell you where we're at.
So, that was pretty much what I was gonna tell you. So, this'll be even quicker. So, yeah, so DESI came out with, Department of Education asked in early November, based on the model that you were in, to fill out a survey. That survey then was taken in an average of over a two-week span, how much, what they now determine live instruction you would have. They now use the, the definition of live instruction to include someone who's in front of you in class and someone who is interacting with you online in a synchronous, that's the buzzword, synchronous way. So, when we look, they, they looked at a cross-section of the instructional model that was hybrid for us in grade 1, 4, 7, and 10. And in grade 1, 4, 7, and 10, our average is 36 hours a week in the hybrid model of synchronous or live instruction. That account, that takes into account Monday, Tuesday, what we do on Wednesday, and what we do in the cohort support on Thursday, if I was using Cohort A as the example. So, we are part of the 68% in the state that have met it. Yesterday, the board, yesterday, so, so those were the guidelines and the regulations that the department set. Yesterday, they had their board meeting. At their board meeting, it was put to a vote, and from seven, and from a 7 to 4 margin, it passed. So, we are fine in what we're doing. We are in line with what the state regulations will be, though there are some districts, local districts, far districts, districts that have to change what they're doing, and those effects, the regulation will actually go into effect on January 19th. The key part is, it is the predominant model that you are using. So, we're fine for all the models that we're using, because we also know that we have a parent choice remote school, and that is also where it's supposed to be also. So, I'm happy to report that, and anytime you're doing the right thing with DESI is always a good thing.
Fred, did you have a question? I heard you chime in.
Yes, I did. Was there any, anything put in place? Did you want parents to call the hotline, call the nurse, or call your office if during break, you know, they have a child that is tested positive?
We have a, we have a COVID line. I'll, I'll send that out to parents again, but we do have a COVID line that Lisa picks up on. So, yes, we'll, we'll blast that out. That's a great reminder, Fred. Appreciate that. If, if your child has something over break, call the COVID line, and we'll get that out in an email blast. So, we are very happy, the other day, that, that we, we are off the naughty list. 68% of the districts in the Commonwealth made the 35-hour average on, on synchronous learning. 32% did not, and, and folks are struggling to try to get that synchronous learning in. They came up with a date of January 19th to have districts all compliant with the new regulations. I have Bob Rogers here from Athletics to give you an update on winter sports. I know that's a hot-button issue. Again, if you watch the news, you see certain districts with winter sports, certain districts without. We did start on Monday, so Bob, just give the committee an update where we're at.
Okay. I would first purpose my remarks by just echoing what you said about Lisa Tobin. She's been an incredible resource for us. Thankfully, we haven't had to use her very often with students getting it from athletics. In fact, to date, knock on wood, we haven't had a single transmission in athletics the entire school year, so that, that's been a positive. So, we did start on Monday. We have six sports running with 11 teams, and the participation numbers are good. We have all kinds of modifications that have been set forth that have worked through many committees at the state level, the EEA, the MIAA, the Sports Medicine Committee, and the COVID Task Force, and it was a long process to be able to get these sports to be able to be played. The biggest modification in all the sports is that the kids are wearing masks, the coaches are wearing masks, and they stay socially distant as long as they can when they're not participating. When they're playing, obviously there's contact. The epidemiologist that sits on the committee testified that, that their research shows that it's not transmitted through contact. That's why the high-risk sports of basketball and hockey have been allowed, because they just don't find any of the research showing that it's, it's transmitted through contact. It's, it's a respiratory virus, and so it really is the key for the masks. And so, what we've done is, we started on Monday with the practices. We're scheduled to start playing games... We're scheduled to start playing, uh, games over Christmas vacation. Um, but that could be pushed off till January. That's a possibility if the numbers keep going in the directions that they are. Some communities, as Jeff said, um, and other school districts have, uh, pulled the plug on actually going to school and then also athletics. And that's something that obviously, um, everybody is monitoring together. But I think we have a good plan in place. I think that everybody's working hard, um, to give the kids what is so important to them, uh, but also recognizing that safety has to be the priority. And all the coaches are on board. Everybody's, uh, working real hard to make it happen. So, um, the bad news is, I know that people love going to the games, to the hockey games, the basketball games and all of that. Um, there will be no fans other than the parent, as of right now, parents will be allowed to go to their home games. Um, but all of the games, uh, in the Patriot League will be streamed live. Um, so you'll be able to sit at home, watch it with your, your children, people that are watching at home. I would encourage you to do that because I think one of the great things about the community and about getting kids to have interests, whether it's sports or arts or, or clubs or activities, is to have them see the older kids do it. And when they see the older kids do it, they aspire to do it. So it's a great family night to sit on the couch, throw it on YouTube. If you have a smart TV, you can watch the game and hopefully watch our teams do really well. We have really good teams this winter. I mean, um, girls' basketball team is, is really terrific and, um, boys' hockey team has a new coach and, and they're really excited for their season. And so I, so I am as well with, with all the sports. And, um, you know, I should also tell you that we are also following the format that we used in the fall, which is we are going to be in the bubble, which means we're only playing Patriot League schools, which I think does help with, we're not having a ton of contact with a lot of other schools. Um, the only little variation on that is girls' hockey because they don't really, we don't really have, we have a couple of other schools like Norwell, uh, East Bridgewater that are in, in our bubble with us, but everybody's agreed, um, to try to limit that contact. So I think we have a good plan, but you know, I could be back here, you know, we could be telling you next week that they pulled the plug or that we had to pull the plug because we will put safety first. No matter what happens, that will be our top priority. And at this point, we feel like it is safe, uh, because we're trusting the, the science and the, and the doctors and, and the guidelines from the state.
I had the opportunity firsthand to go to some different things. I'd last game that I went to was a girls volleyball game and I was impressed with every time the ball went out of bounds. There were two people at each end of the gym. New ball came in, that ball got washed, everything got cleaned. Dawn was there because her daughter's on the team. And, uh, it was pretty impressive of the precautions that everyone was taking.
Yeah, it's interesting that, that because, uh, you know, I, you think about that, that in volleyball, they made us clean the ball after every time they served the ball and had a few hits. And then in basketball, now they're going to be passing around the same ball. And that was because of the research that they've come up with, that the epidemiologists say that it's not a contact thing. Like we still will clean as much as you can in a school and everything, but there, this research is showing that that's not how the disease is transmitted, the, the virus is transmitted. So we're not going to have to do the same kind of cleaning. We will change the ball out every quarter. And, uh, in basketball, for example, every player has their own practice ball. So we limit it as much as we can, um, just in case, you know, trying to, to mitigate it if we can, but I don't think that that's where the big risk comes from. But the thing that I was impressed with Bob in the fall, and this is the thing that I would tell the committee to have some confidence in, I know that some people will be like, well, should they really be playing? The one thing I would say is that, um, from the, from the kids to the parents to the coaches, everybody worked together to try to abide by what we said we had to do, even though sometimes they seem silly, what we had to do. We did, well, you know, everybody did what they, what they had to do, and that's what we're going to do in the winter too.
Questions for the athletic director? Thank you for the good job and, and keep up the good work. I know, uh, it's a struggle getting all of this done because it's a changing, it's a moving target, so to speak. And the regulations change every other day. And I'm sure you talked to a lot of different schools and try to keep up with it. So it's, it's not what everybody thinks. It's easier when we're in school, five days a week and everybody's here. This outer school learning and the changing every day is twice as hot on teachers and staff, and I've seen it firsthand. So thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a, have a nice holiday, everybody. You too.
Are there any questions on, on the COVID update? Anyone have any questions before I move on? Awesome. So two calendar changes. Uh, I kind of shoot out, shout out, shot an email out to the committee a little over a week ago about the 21st and 22nd moving to full remote. Um, given that authority during COVID to make the change, I made the change for our staff and for our teachers, um, and for our parents to plan a full remote day on the 21st and 22nd. And the rationale behind it is, is there's a couple. We really want to see if our remote plan works. Um, trying to fix out, and we did, when we talked about it today and George and I went over it with some of the principals, wanted to make sure everything was in line. And now we want to see it. And we want to be able to critique that over a couple of days to make any changes before and hopefully not ever having to put it in place. Secondly, um, I really personally just didn't want kids to come in from a weekend and potentially be a close contact of a person who was positive in class and then have to quarantine over Christmas. Um, so it was kind of looking at our district and I've seen these quarantines and students who have been close contacts either through school or through, through home. And, and we will close up on, on Friday of in person and that gives parents the choice if they, if their kids are out over that weekend. But the school district necessarily won't be a close contact of students that have been diagnosed Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, because they won't have a close contact. Um, I appreciate the committee for supporting that decision and moving it forward. It's there. The second date, uh, I'm asking the committee to, to move the budget day from February 3rd to February 10th. I have a couple of key people that won't be around the weekend prior to the 3rd. They'll be away the 1st and the 2nd, and I would like them involved in the final budget presentation planning. So if we could just move that, um, budget presentation from February 3rd to February 10th, I would appreciate that.
Do we need a motion for that?
Motion to accept that calendar change?
Second, Mr. Boyce.
Do you have that, Michelle? Any questions? Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Ms. Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
I got it, I got you.
I was kicking it out, it just was a little slow. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Okay, you're good, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, briefly reporting out last night, uh, some of us were, well, we were all invited to the Whitman FinCom to give a brief overview. Uh, we, uh, had six folks there. Uh, Mr. Cullen, he volunteered to drop out so we didn't have an official quorum as we didn't post that meeting. Um, and we wanted to make sure we were on the up and up and nobody could challenge the fact that we had a school committee meeting. Uh, I presented some raw figures to the Whitman FinCom. And it, as I said to them, and I, for those of you, I'm sorry, this is a repeat of yesterday, but this is really difficult to produce what or to predict what we're going to need in FY22. There's some hard numbers. We're going to have a contract, hopefully either through negotiations or, but we are, we, we will have to pay teachers, uh, next year. That's a fixed cost. What, how much it goes up will be determined, but it's a fixed cost. Our utilities will be a fixed cost and they will have increases. Our insurances will have, uh, our fixed costs, there will be increases. Our, our pension, uh, for PCA will have a, is a fixed cost and there will be an increase. Um, the biggest number that we don't know about, and for those folks that are watching tonight, uh, back in August, um, George and my, and I presented to this school committee, uh, three plans of, of return to school. A hybrid plan, a full in plan, and a remote plan, um, in case we needed to go out. The school committee affirmed we went hybrid, uh, but the commissioner of education also gave parents the opportunity to opt out of in-person learning, hybrid or in-person, and go fully remote. At that meeting in August, uh, we thought we would go with an outside vendor, Teca Academy, Greenfield, or Ingenuity. And I think I've mentioned before, parents were dismayed and wanted Whitman Hansen teachers to teach that. So we did. We put together a remote school and, and currently we have more than 500 students in remote school, K to 12. We livestreamed about 192 students from the high school in that remote program. So we're not actually, we didn't actually have to hire teachers for that. The problem is if the commissioner allows parents to go remote come September and we are all vaccinated and, and everybody says it's safe to come back and I can put 22 students in a classroom, um, across the district and I have parents that opt out to go remote, I am going to have to ask this committee to make a hard choice. Will the district continue to offer its own remote program? Or will those students have to either choice out to Teca Academy or Greenfield? Or will we provide an Ingenuity program that will not be provided by Whitman Hansen teachers? Both of those programs or both of those choices come with costs that this year, we're hoping to have those costs allocated or provided by the CARES Act substantially. I don't believe the CARES Act will be in August of 21. And we will have, we won't have that option, uh, to get federal reimbursement. We might, I'm not sure. So what I told the FinCom yesterday is, I don't know. We might be up a million dollars in just remote education. We started our own school this year. We started our own school with 500 plus students. 380 students are, are K to eight. We have a principal of that school. Next year, if we have to do that and keep our own remote option out there, they're going to need services as well. Special education teacher, a counselor, things that Indian Head, Conley, Duval, Whitman Middle and Hanson Middle have. Um, we kind of put it together. I think it's been relatively good. Uh, we've, uh, helped the teachers, but that's not going to go into my FY22 budget presentation necessarily. Or we'll have option B, a, a presentation of full return or a presentation of full return with this option. So explaining that to the, the FinCom, knowing that they have a very difficult job of trying to figure out the finances of Whitman and the same will be in Hanson. We have a difficult job too because we don't have the direction from the Commonwealth yet, from the governor's office to the board of education, to the department of elementary and secondary education. We're all hanging out there in limbo. I'm not the only superintendent that's frustrated by the fact that we don't know which direction we're going to have to plan on for next year. And I know you folks, as people who are in charge of the funding and the budget, are going to be held to that tough decisions come later this spring. Um, so I will keep you abreast of that, but that's what I told the, the FinCom yesterday. What I also told the FinCom yesterday is in my sights of, of fiscal 2022 is no outstanding elaborate program, or we're not going to try to bring a program back. I don't feel it's the time and the committee could steer me wrong, or can steer me in a different path come February, but bringing in no cost full day K next year, I don't know the numbers. I don't know if parents are even going to want to bring their kids to school next year as our kindergarten numbers are down. So I, I, I'm shying away from that for only this year. I'm also shying away from a high cost of trying to bring back the foreign language program at, at the middle schools. And I'm also shying away from a, a, a delayed start or changing our start times because we still don't know what school's going to look like next year. My goal for next year is to just get kids and teachers back to some semblance of when we started in September of 2019. Uh, something that looks like that. We know things are shifted and we know things are different. But for the cost factor, we also don't know what state revenues and, and town revenue are, are going to be like. What I do think we might have to spend some money on is catching some kids up, seeing where kids are at. And we've reported out already on how we're assessing and pre-assessing some of our students. And we're going to show you that again in their mid, mid time or mid-year assessment. Uh, we'll, we'll present that again to see where our kids are and how we need to define, you know, get, catch them up to grade level if need be. Uh, and that's where we might be spending some money on some reading specialists, some math interventionists, some things like that. But that's an unknown as well. And I know it comes with a cost, but I don't have those costs yet. Um, so I was able to share that with the FinCom yesterday. Uh, the other piece that is not a school committee decision, it will be a town decision, is non-mandated busing. I shared with the FinCom, um, the challenges of mandated versus non-mandated busing in both communities. Uh, what's that like for us when we plan a bus? Um, what if non-mandated busing was cut and it was offered as pay to go? Uh, our students that are free and reduced will still have the opportunity to ride those buses, what the bus routes are, are like. I did volunteer myself and members of my staff to work with a FinCom representative and a board of selectmen representative to have a small subcommittee to discuss some of that because it, it can't be just discussed in 15 minutes on a Zoom meeting. It has to, there's, there's a lot of thought process and of the whys of that. So it'll be up to, as Chair Anderson said, it's up to the board of selectmen in Whitman to see how they want to proceed with that. But it's really not a school committee issue, but I feel like the folks on the committee should know what's going on in both communities. The question did come up, would Hanson, um, be considering of, of cutting non-mandated busing? And I said, I just couldn't speak on behalf of the town of Hanson. Uh, it's not within my purview. Uh, they were very grateful for us to present. I apologize for not having hard numbers, but in December of, of 2020, it's very difficult to project, predict what, uh, what we're going to need for September of 2021. Um, the FinCom was very, uh, affirmed that they were going to try to support the schools as much as they could in the town of Whitman this year. Does anyone have any questions on the FinCom meeting from last night?
Chris, then Mr. Boyce.
So Jeff, just, um, to your remarks there in terms of new programming for next fiscal year. Um, so I'm in complete support of what you just described, right? I think.
Then Fred.
We like to focus on the shiny new object, but the amount of effort and the impact of actually getting kids potentially back in schools next year, to me supersedes any new shiny object. So I'm in complete support. How much guidance do you need from us on that in terms of making sure that you have, um, that clarity from us in terms of where you go from here?
I, I think as we.
You want us to talk about that tonight or is that?
That's, that's down the road. I didn't want to, I, I think as we, we get ready to present the budget in February, you know, I'd like to hear school committee, where they're at. We'll talk about that a little bit in January, what you'd like to see us focus in on. And then we can present our budget of the cost and, and give you some idea of what, what that really is going to be. Uh, but I appreciate that.
Mr. Boyce, then Mr. Small.
Yeah, that was a very good meeting and, and I said that to the, um, finance committee. And I, the superintendent just hit perfectly on, I think, all levels of, you know, he gave it that methodic thought, and I do agree with, uh, Mr. Howard of, you know, it, there's, there's not going to be the shiny. We, uh, our thing is to try to get everyone back in the building and buildings. And, um, you were just spot on, Jeff, and so appreciative of that. Um, I, I thought it was a great meeting to have to end a, such a hectic year, so it was really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce. Mr. Small?
A couple of quick things. Uh, first off, and I tried to get somebody's attention last night and I couldn't get into the conversation. But, uh, I'm not sure why Hanson's, you know, paying for non-mandated busing came up in a Whitman FinCom, but, uh, Hanson doesn't have sidewalks. You know, I think, you know, they do what's the safest thing that they can for their children, you know, and I applaud them for, you know, paying for non-mandated busing to make sure that their kids are safe, you know, uh, as far as that goes. Uh, Jeff, if you, uh, you know.
Excuse me.
Feel you need the backing of the committee, uh, this evening even, I'd be willing to make the motion that we table, you know, the, uh, languages, uh, full day K and, uh, start times for the FY22 fiscal year. Um, you know, if you think that, uh, that would help give you better direction to put more reference to a remediation in the students that need immediate help, you know, in FY22.
I, I, I don't know. I mean, I think if people hear, I'm feeling that, I don't feel like we need to have a motion and a vote. I think we can talk about that at the next meeting and then in January, give, give us[1678.88] give us more of an official target of the focuses that the committee wants to see us go and then go from there. I don't think, and we do have a, you know, I'm not prepared to speak more on that tonight, Fred, so I don't think, personally, I don't think we need a motion tonight.
Okay.
You done, Fred?
Yep.
Thank you. Dawn?
Jeff, do you plan on bringing the strategic plan forward in January?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll be able to use that in addition to our plan? Okay. Can we check on the WHCA? I'm getting messages again that it's, I don't know.
I just said that there was a color issue.
Fred, can you see it? Dawn's getting some messages that it-
There's a problem online anyways.
All right, they got it now. Sorry. It's just fuzzy and-
You good to go?
Um, yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Chris Scriven.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to say, I just tried to get on the live stream. Time to meet inside, I have to enable yourself. If that's an ongoing issue, I'm sure I'll be glad to talk.
Okay. So Chris can't get on either. So Chris Scriven can't log on. So WHCA, if you're watching, we got some issues if potentially you could. I know it's being recorded on YouTube, so you can watch it tomorrow, I believe. I'm going to move on to Finance Committee from Hanson. We spoke to folks from Hanson. Their next Finance Committee is after the first of the year where they will be appointing a liaison for us to speak to from the town of Hanson, just as an update from Hanson. So they're in the know, but they were not meeting until after the first of the year. And I said that's not an issue for us. John, you want to shoot a little bit about budget where we're at, please?
Get one. Sorry. I can get on.
Okay.
Michelle, are you on the Hanson or Whitman?
Uh, Whitman.
Okay. I know that everybody received the November budget reports, both revenue and expense. And I'm happy to report there's nothing dramatic that pops out at me as I look at it. When I look at this year compared to last year, and I'm the first to admit that this is a very different year. At this point in last year, we had spent 51% of the budget with five months out of 12. This year, we're at 50%, so pretty much on line, not, I'm sorry. We're at 45%, so we're actually below where we were last year. I think that has to do somewhat with unemployment where, given all the issues of fraud and other things, the Department of Unemployment has given us some leeway in terms of paying. In fact, we just paid our very first bill. They postponed it so that they could work out some issues, so that seems to be writing itself. And of course, the other part of it is that some of our expenses this year are being covered by the grants and we're expecting to get that, to pick it up. In terms of revenue, we're almost exactly where we were last year. Last year, we had collected 51% of our projected revenues. This year, we're, I'm sorry, we're at 45% of our projected revenues and this year we're at 44%, so no big difference. So far, things look pretty good. Now, all of this is based upon the idea that we will get reimbursed for some of our expenses from COVID. When I was here the last time, we talked about the two requests that we've submitted through the towns of Whitman and Hanson, which is the way we submit our CARES requests. They go through the towns, not directly to Plymouth County. While we've had a question on one of those submissions, we haven't seen the money yet, but then again, that's fine. It was a reasonable question that they had. I have an additional $286,000 worth of expenses that we will be submitting, I think on Friday. We just finished the paperwork today. It has to be reviewed and make some changes to it. And then, in the past, I've talked about the earmarks that were done by Representative Cutler and Senator Brady. Well, there was good news last Friday when we were officially notified that after some back and forth over who was actually going to fund this, it was a question of-
Excuse me one second for interrupting. I've just got a message. We can't hear you. Evidently, it's not coming through to Mr. Scriven and Mr. Small.
Want to try that one?
I-
Your speakers are here.
Okay. I'm-
That one and that one.
Here and here.
It's not going to make it down there.
So does this-
Maybe if we move you one further this way.
Sure. Am I speaking into the microphone or into-
It's a conference call.
Okay, we'll test out.
There you go.
Improvise.
Can- It just sounds much like the Verizon commercial. Can you hear me now?
Fred, can you hear John now?
Uh, much better than it was.
Okay.
For people who are watching on, I guess at home, on the livestream, is it coming through on that?
It was probably just the phones.
These guys right here, because they can't hear you.
All right. Fred and Chris, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Do you want me to start at the beginning or did you hear some or all of it?
No, I sort of followed along with what you were saying a little bit.
All right.
Around 50% of the assessment.
Continue on.
A quick recap.
But really couldn't-
Okay, a quick recap. A quick recap. In terms of expenses and revenues, we're doing fine. We're slightly below last year's expenditure level, so the burn rate of funds is okay. In terms of revenue, we're just about the same as last year and that's okay too. We filed for this all, our budget though is all dependent upon getting reimbursed from CARES for some of the expenses we have. We've submitted a couple of requests already. And while we haven't received the funds, we know that they've received them because we've gotten a question, which was sort of a simple question to respond to. We have an additional $286,000 worth of expenses that we have done the paperwork internally and I suspect we'll be giving it to Whitman and Hanson on Friday so that they can forward it on to Plymouth County. We just finished the paperwork inside today. Last Friday, we got some good news, sort of. In the past, you've heard me talk about the earmarks that were in the budget that were put forward by Representative Cutler and Senator Brady. They passed, but we hadn't received the money or any instructions on how to go about getting it. As it turns out, there was some confusion between the Legislature, A&amp;F, Administration and Finance, and DESI. The Legislature passed the money, passed a bill that included the funds. Department of Education said, well, we don't have those funds. A&amp;F said, well, we don't really have those funds either. There seemed to be some confusion about where it was going to come from. And fortunately, through the hard work of many people, in particular Representative Cutler, last Thursday, the Plymouth County Commissioners voted to use CARES Act funds to cover that, those earmarks. I will tell you, we were not the only district that was in that situation. Several other districts in Plymouth County were in the same position. So last, the good news is that last Friday, we found out that we got the money. The challenge comes that we have to spend that money by December 30th. That's not a lot of time. Spend means we have to receive the goods, issue a purchase, sort of receive the goods and get an invoice. So there has been talk about a delay of an additional 90 days on CARES Act funds. This is a case where you get to say it really does take an act of Congress for that to happen. As it turns out, there are several municipalities throughout the state and frankly, throughout the country that are, we would like to see it extended. This Friday will be the third Friday in a row where we're hoping to hear that there may be some delay. If there is, then we will be thankful for that and work on it. Meanwhile, Jeff and George and other people within the district have been looking about, looking at items that we could spend those funds on for necessary expenditures because of course, we still have to meet the terms of the grant, which turn out to be essentially the same terms of the grant that goes with the CARES Act. So film at 11 as they say on that. And then finally, I think everybody is aware that we're now almost six months into the year and we finally have a state budget. We're talking about doing the '22 budget. We don't have the 21. The state just finished the '21 budget. On Monday, just two days ago, DESI sent out the Chapter 70 numbers, which is sort of part of what we rely on. And the numbers looked a lot like what we thought we would be getting back in August when DESI sent out some additional preliminary guidance, although it wasn't for real. It's worked its way through. It looks pretty much like that, so we know the challenges we're facing. At this point in time, the Department of Revenue has not issued new cherry sheets. There's still preliminary cherry sheets and there's some, excuse me, some categories in the cherry sheet that we need some final numbers on before we can go back and review where we stand in terms of the assessments and the work we went through back in, gosh, back in May. I think it was May 18th that we actually passed a budget and here we are. Now, I've never seen anything go quite this long before. We've had some delays, but nothing quite this dramatic. I suspect when I come back in January, we will have those numbers and see what action, if any, we have to take. Back in August, the Department of Education, Christine Lynch, you've met her, who deals with the regional questions, had issued some guidance about what we would be doing if we had any issues and needed to deal with. So we'll review the guidance. We'll have some numbers, I'm sure, and we'll talk about it next month.
Any questions for John?
Yeah, John?
Yes.
I know the house weights and means numbers, which I believe is what the governor signed. We were down about $190,000 between a combination of Chapter 70, Circuit Breaker, some transportation reimbursements, et cetera. Does that still need to be finalized further or is that the final?
Well, we're down in Chapter 70 by what had been the $25 per pupil that we traditionally received, which is about $110,000. The other two items that you mentioned are really cherry sheet items. We don't have a firm transportation number yet. They're all estimates and that may or may not have shifted. And in terms of Circuit Breaker, there has been no official word on what Circuit Breaker is. There's been some suggestions as to what it would be. So until we get those numbers on a cherry sheet, it's all speculation. It is possible, it is possible it could get to be the number that you've mentioned. And at that point in time, we now have to consider what other revenue are we talking about that we might have? And the ESAR funds are certainly something that comes to mind, so we'll see how it all works out.
Okay. And on the other note, if you need help spending money in a very quick fashion, I can always have my wife give you a call.
That's very kind. I'm not sure that it would meet the terms of the grant, however.
Anyone else?
Chair Hayes.
Dawn?
I was going to ask about spending the $400,000. Do we intend to purchase more technology? That comes to mind first for me, just to add to our inventory because I don't believe we're one-to-one at this point.
If I-
Go ahead.
If I could. Technology is certainly foremost. And in fact, the remote learning that we have going on now and the success we've had with it has really been a result of the CARES Act that has funded an awful lot of it. The issue we're running into at this point in time has to do with delivery. So at this point in time, they are saying we need to take delivery, have beneficial use. Many of the, a significant portion of the money that we would like to spend on technology is in orders that were placed back in September and October and perhaps even in August when we were looking at buying Chromebooks in various stages. Those, because we and apparently the rest of the world decided that Chromebooks was the product to have, the delivery has been delayed. What we expected to get in October and November, and in fact, in some cases, September, are not here. And George has been in contact with the vendor to see what we can do. And so we're looking around that, but again, we're going to need delivery and delivery in a quick order.
We're not going to leave money on the table.
That's not our intention.
We can only spend it when we can have the product. So we actually did some research to see if we could pivot to another type of Chromebook. We ordered ones with 14- to 16-inch monitors. They have in stock 8-inch monitors or screens. That's not going to work for our kids, so we also don't want to just, we're hoping John's conversation with Tom O'Brien on Friday looks for an extension of 30 to 60 to 90 days so we can adequately get what we've ordered to come in. Again, we're not the only school district in Limbo right now. I know the town of Middleborough is waiting for 1,500 Chromebooks. They're in some warehouse somewhere. The fire chief spoke to our fire chief and said, you know, can we just get a couple of trucks and go raid the warehouse? But that's how desperate people are getting because there's money out there and there's a deadline. And in October, the December 30th deadline seems a far ways away. We're two and a half weeks away and nobody's gotten their product yet. So we are trying to come up with a plan either through technology to reappropriate the money that we've expended for the Chromebooks, to reassess that again into the costs of remote learning, meaning staffing for that, so it doesn't come out of the district budget. So John, George and I are trying to play with the numbers so that we don't leave money on the table and have it reallocated within the county, and that's what we're afraid of.
Yeah, and just to be clear, this issue of the 30th of December and looking for an extension truly is an issue that needs to be addressed by Congress. There's nothing that Plymouth County or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts or any other states that were recipients of CARES funds can affect. It is a congressional decision. And my understanding is that throughout the country, there is this issue because the pandemic has slowed supply chains to such an extent that it's not just technology that's been delayed, it's personal protective equipment, it's cleaning products, frankly, all the items that this program was designed to provide. Well, there is a nationwide need and not a supply at this point in time that can meet it, apparently.
Right. If I may, that being said, I thought I've heard also that they understand that we've ordered this and it's out of our control that we haven't received it. So hopefully, going on the basis of the purchase order, you know, we're not at risk of not getting reimbursement. But again, it's up to Congress or-
Correct.
County Commissioner to decide whether reimbursement-
Right now, if it's not here, we're not getting reimbursed.
Yeah, it is not a county commissioner. It is a federal government that sets the rules.
And that's what we're concerned about because it's not a local decision, it's a federal decision. And John has reminded me of that a few times, so.
One of the few times where you say it's an act of Congress that's going to make a difference.
And also, just not on the purchase of the CARES, the federal benefit of FFR, George, what is it? FFRCA? The timeout when you can take your COVID-
Families First.
So that runs out on December 30th as well. So right now, if a staff member is quarantining, they don't have to use their sick time. It's FFC. They're given the 10 days. On December 30th, that's no longer there. So if staff, and that's not even just our staff, that's anybody. It was granted to all employees, food workers, whatever. That goes away on the 30th. So we're hoping that there's a different package that comes out of Washington sooner than later that will not only benefit us for the CARES option, but also through some employee benefits. So some of our folks aren't necessarily coming to school sick and they're using that as quarantine time. So that's just another piece. When John says act of Congress, it truly is Washington.
Right. Okay. Would we be able to get a report of the submissions that you've made to both towns of our outstanding expenses on the-
Sure.
CARES Act funds?
Yep.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? John, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Well, I'm all set.
Okay. Any further questions for Superintendent? Next up is the state investigation status. As of today, we have heard nothing from the state investigation status. I have heard no new news, did nothing. Jeff, I don't believe you've heard anything.
Well, I've not been contacted by anybody at the state level around anything other than the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to say we're not on the naughty list. That's the only contact I've had from the state.
You will not see this on the agenda again because as far as we can see, it's a non-issue. I know it has created some tense moments for the superintendent in hiring and stuff, but if anyone has any questions or would like to speak before I move on? Mr. Howard, then Mr. Small.
Yeah, so just, I think, brief. I know you've got five minutes allocated to this, so I'll try and be to the point. I think the only thing that, so I agree, we've got to move on. There's no sense talking about this thing that doesn't exist every week. But I think the one thing that's important to me is, and we hit on this last meeting, someone brought it up. You know, there were concerns that I think were brought forth by, whether it was members of this committee, select folks, otherwise. We did have a joint meeting with all of those bodies together. And as a result of that meeting, we determined as a group that no further action would be taken. So I think, I'm hoping that as we move forward, we're all of the same opinion that it's the will of the committees that speak and it shouldn't be that of an individual action. Certainly, people have the freedom to do what they want to do. But my hope is people that are on these committees understand that we need to act as a committee or a board and we move forward accordingly as a board. So if I completely disagree with something, too bad. You know, if the rest of the committee feels strongly, then to me, that's, if I want to be on this committee, that's what I have to live by. So I think that's, just want to make sure we're clear on that before we move on.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Small?
And I will echo Mr. Howard's sentiments there. We are as one committee, not an individual. That being said, would it make any sense for us to send a letter of inquiry to the Department of Revenue in the Inspector General's office and just ask them point-blank, are we under investigation for anything? And if so, you know, please respond. If not, we'll take your science as being, silence as being complicit that there's no active investigation against us. And I'll review, mirror and go from there.
What's your thought process, ladies and gentlemen? I would think-
How long does it take to, how long has this been going on for? Since August?
Yes. Yes.
Wouldn't we have been contacted by now or is the state that, that backlogs?
I would.
I, I feel like that's maybe rhetorical, but I don't know. I, I think that if we were under investigation, we should have been contacted by now.
I agree. Mr. Howard?
Yeah. I mean, I, I completely agree. I think everyone knows how to find us. Everyone knows how to find the officials at the town of Hanson and the town of Whitman. So if they want to send us something, send us something at this point. I don't think it's worse continuing to ask.
Anyone else? Fred?
No. Whatever the vote of the committee, you know, is, I'm just thinking that if there was an investigation occurring, this might be a way to determine that it's been closed and we are not under active investigation and there's no actions being taken, et cetera.
Well, if anything, I believe Fred, if anything was going to have done, again, to send what Chris says or what Ms. Niffen says, they know where we are, the towns haven't moved around, it's, no one's notified anyone. It's, I think it's a dead issue. If, if anybody wants to, if you want to take a vote, I'll do it right now if somebody makes a motion. Seeing none? All right, we're moving on. Okay. We need to appoint a non-voting representative to serve as liaison to the town of Whitman for Buildings, Facilities and Capital Expenditures Committee. The small letters are BFCEC, Building Finance Community Expenditures Committee. Didn't we have somebody, Michelle, doing that already?
Can I speak, Mr. Hayes?
Oh, sure, Fred, go ahead.
I've been performing that function for the past two or three years. And it was, was the thought process that we thought that it was a voting position and thought that I was appointed by the Board of Selectmen a few years back as a voting member. It was recently discovered that it is not a voting position. I was appointed by the Board of Selectmen to sit on that committee as a voting member. You know, I've been serving the, you know, the, that role as the liaison. It's on an as needed basis, pretty much. If anything, I would recommend Ernie Zandlin because I used to, you know, call him and he would come to the meetings when there was something to discuss as far as the schools went, you know, and what was happening with projects, et cetera, and to justify what the requests were and just going to a little bit more detail. Ernie would be the perfect person to be the liaison.
Fred, that's, they're, they're meeting by Zoom right now, correct?
Correct.
And how, how many meetings are the, are those? I mean, how many times a month do they meet?
Once or twice a month right now, heading into the, you know, budget area, budget time.
All right. So Fred, do you want to continue?
I can, I can function as both roles if you'd like.
Would anyone else like to do it? Nope. You're it, Fred.
Okay. And I'll ask Ernie, you know, the same as I always do.
Yep. I think that's
To, to come to explain, you know, different things. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, Fred.
Okay.
You did volunteer, right?
Sure. I'm going to be there anyways.
All right. Okay. Next up, substitute K raises.
So Bob, I'd like to move that to the January agenda.
Okay.
The waiting on more detail
Okay.
On where we want to go. I have some ideas, but.
Okay. No issues. Anybody have a problem with putting that on the agenda for January?
Just pass over it. Pass over it.
We're going to pass over it.
I make the motion to pass over until January.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Niffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Miss Byers?
Yes.
Mr. Colletti?
Yes.
Yes? Mr. Colletti says yes. Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
In unanimous. Subcommittee reports. Pilgrimage area?
That's me.
Mr. Boyce?
Thank you. So we met December 3rd Zoom. It was a regular business meeting and we also had the executive director with her team put together the annual report. Now, I would have forwarded a copy in the traditional way to Michelle and asked to disperse it to all of you. It is on their website. So I would recommend if you want a copy, a look at that. And it was very nicely written. I think she always does a good job. She tells us really the programming that's going on, the things that we've pulled together and fostered over the past year. It, it's a really good, it's a really good take. Anyone have any questions? No? Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Boyce?
But do I get a part two or what do you want me to do?
Nope. I think you can get a part two, since you're speaking.
That's why I only use one minute. So folks, I was on the, the PINCOM call, as I mentioned, we talked about earlier, and I told them last night that I was going to be doing this presentation. I did hear from one Whitman selectman who he and his wife would like to do something as well. I think one other time in my years on the finance committee, I tried to do what I call them Q and 300, try to get 1,000 people to bring $300 to John McEwen's office on July 1st, whatever year it was. I was the only one that showed up with a check. But I mean, you know, the idea, you kind of put them out there when you can.
We'll still take the money, Steve.
I know, I know. Well, that, it's a little bit less than that, but one of the things I thought of, and I asked Mr. Ferrell upon leaving our last meeting, is, you all know I've been a student in our district. I want to donate this, it's an HP Chrome Book 14A, which, Mr. Burke gave me the list today. I looked up and it is good through, the certificate for it is good through June of 2026. So it's one of the newest ones. I want to donate it to the district. I, I would like to hope to do more. If I go back to like 1995 for a moment, the teacher that I volunteered with at the time at the whole school, she put me in task with coming up with a creative way to do funding so that they could get a couple of Mac computers. What we had down the library, which was the old theater at the time, kind of made up half of a kindergarten and half of the library was a bunch of, I think, Apple IIEs. That's rarely early technology. I just felt it was time for me to reappear and, and do something else. But if I can also tandem this with something, I don't necessarily care about the recognition and, and, you know, anything that goes on with that. I care about us and I care about our communities and I care about our students. And this past year, we have written one heck of a chapter. We're just mentioning with the state investigation and not to bring that back up, but we have written ourselves one heck of a chapter and not all due to us. Sometimes it's external forces and so forth. You know, we've seen some of the most unusual things. We've had the best people in all of you and including the superintendent, assistant superintendent and all the staff and parents to just get through that chapter. But we get to write the next chapter, start in January 1. And I want this to be a symbol of that. Let's not have something surprising come up or someone behind our backs. We all here as people, we're all here to care about each other. There's no separation of us in anything. I, I said it before, I've learned from people, my 25 or 20 years or whatever in, in town government and helping in any way I can, doesn't mean I can't still learn. And we also want the people, Mr. Scriven said this after our town elections, he was complimenting me about, you know, I knew Mr. Boyce as a young person, when I was a young person, always heard his name around town. We want our kids saying that same thing when they become the next vice chair here and say, I remember Mr. Hayes. Well, we, we know we're going to bronze Mr. Hayes and put him up front of the building. We already know that. I mean, that's a, that's a given. But I, or I knew Mr. Howard or Mr. Jones or Mr. Colletti. I knew such and such and they made a mark on me. That's what we're doing. We're making a mark and we're writing it as a book. It's a never-ending book, but it's another chapter. Let's move to that chapter. And I just ask you all to join me in doing that. And sorry for the standing or anything, but I, I don't tend to be quiet on things.
Thanks for the donation.
Thank you, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you all.
I believe, wait a minute, Fred. I believe that we already voted to accept this at another meeting.
I think so.
So I don't believe we have to vote.
Did Steve bring it up before?
That was a different phone call.
Okay.
We did, right?
No, we didn't. So
Okay. Well, it's not on the agenda, but seeing it's, it's a gift and it is a week before Christmas. Fred, do you have something before I move to the, go ahead?
Yeah. I wanted to ask Mr. Boyce, was that a challenge for all of us to donate a Chromebook? When he said that we should all, you know, band together, like go into his office?
Fred, you band together in the ways that you do. And let me tell you, knowing you from a personal and professional side and having many years of, of working with you, you, you know how to band. There's no problem. You really know how to raise, raise the bar.
If that's a challenge, I'm in.
You're right. Well, you gave me $100 that time to jump in the cold fridge of waters.
I'll never forget that.
That was a, I don't know if that's a compliment or not, but anyways.
All right. We have, we've got somebody, we've got, I'm not trying to
Oh, yeah. I'm over my two minutes. Go ahead.
Well, you, you've got two Chromebooks now to accept.
Okay.
Do we have three?
Let's go.
One of us, one of our select persons.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion to accept Mr. Boyce's Chromebook gift.
So moved.
Say it again. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Sniffen?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Dawn?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Colletti?
Yes.
Mr. Small?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Boyce.
Thank you. And the other thing I did mention, if this can be like a flex, Stanley, I don't think we can add kids' names, but it'd be interesting to see it go around and who gets to use it and benefit from it. But it doesn't have to happen. I understand we want to protect people's identities and so forth. But thank you all.
Facility Subcommittee. They haven't met.
We haven't met, but one thing just to keep the whole committee abreast upon, last year, we had asked for a portable generator for the town of Whitman to cover both the Vols and Conley. I was determined to have a generator in each building. Ernie has spoken and Lisa Green proceeding with a little bit more than half the money because the monies that were approved weren't quite enough to do both. But to get a generator over at Conley as quickly as we can, so we can get that installed and then move to the Devol project closer in the summertime, that's going to have to go through conservation and do some wetlands, et cetera. So just to keep the committee up to date on that.
Thank you. Policy Subcommittee. You haven't met, have you, Dawn?
No, but I do have an update. I wanted to check with the other members of the Policy Subcommittee on scheduling a meeting for January. The committee, it's Mr. Colletti, Mr. Scriven and Mr. Forth. Potential dates would be Monday, the 11th or Monday, the 25th.
Just put it out there. Please, please respond back on which dates would work. Mr. Forth is on that committee, isn't he?
Yes.
He is in here. So please respond directly back to Dawn so she can get this committee put together. Thank you.
I, I also just wanted to mention, I reached out to Jim Hardy, he's our field rep at MASC, just to ask about policy subcommittees because I'm new to that committee and as a chairperson. So I asked for a little help as far as what our charge is or what, you know, should we be looking at? And he just replied back that typically if he was to come in and meet with the Subcommittee, he would review best practices for completing our charge. He could meet with the full committee if we wished. He typically just explains about policy, how it's implemented, evaluated, the process for developing a new policy, review existing policies and best practices for keeping them up to date. So
Okay.
Just, that's, you know.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Insurance Subcommittee.
We met a week and a half ago, I believe, two weeks ago. We are in the process of gathering information at this point in time for our next meeting. I guess it'd be the easiest way to say it.
Thank you, Fred. Negotiation Subcommittee, Mike?
I think we're having a meeting, an executive meeting tonight to discuss.
Okay. Regional Agreement Subcommittee, Chris?
We have not met and we don't have any imminent plans to meet. Hanson is going through the process of reaching out to a third party or taking bits with the third parties to go through their process of, you know, finding out about de-utilization and that you have on the town.[1736.83]